Good evening, everyone. This is the December 17 meeting of the Revere City Council. Would everyone please rise to salute the flag? Roll call of the members, Councilor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councilor Keith.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselsky. Here, Councilor Patch.
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rizzo.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rotundo is absent. Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Janino.
Here.
Here, Quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of December 3, 2018.
Madam President. Point of personal privilege.
State your point, Vice President McKenna.
Thank you very much. Last week, our city experienced much sadness. The council would like to recognize and commend the Revere firefighters, the Revere police, the state police, and the MTs. Thank you for standing tall and representing Revere to its finest. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor McKenna. Start with unfinished business. Sure, unfinished business, calendar item number three, in ordinance relative to abandoned bicycles. Anyone have any questions, comments, or concerns? Okay. Ordered on a second reading. Ordered on a third and final reading. Roll call for engrossment and ordainment. On an ordinance relative to abandoned bicycles, Councilor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Janino.
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance is engrossed and ordained. Next item is the zoning subcommittee report. Councilor Rotundo.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee meeting went pretty fast and without a hitch. I would like to note that we will be retaining 18231, 18304 to remain in committee. We will be placing 18376 on file. We will be rendering out 18304, correction, 18330 relative to retaining walls. The language will be amended to add, refer to the state code, I believe. The city clerk, how's that information? Could you read that, city clerk?
So, the current language within Section 17.16.280, retaining wall, is hereby deleted in its entirety and inserting a place thereof. Please refer to the Massachusetts Code of Regulations pertaining to retaining walls.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Additionally, 18371, a special permit application for Verizon Wireless, in which they will put a small cell antenna, which was on display, at 243 North Shore Road. I would also like to send a side letter to the city clerk in the mayor's office referring them to changes in the SEC's ruling and that we obtain a municipal agreement with them in order to facilitate some type of fee for every cell antenna that they place within our community. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And additionally, rule favorably for 18372, which is also a special permit application, this time for, I believe it was for AT&amp;T, a small cell antenna to help facilitate service up at 12 South Furnace Street in Revere, as well as a letter referring to that so that we can get an agreement with AT&amp;T if we don't have one already, and for that matter, any other service providers such as Sprint, et cetera. That said, Madam Clerk, through you to the President, excuse me, if we could rule on these, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. So, calendar item four will remain in committee. Calendar item five will remain in committee. We'll start with calendar item six, and this will be ordered on a second reading as amended. Ordered on a second reading, oh, third or fin, wow. Ordered on a third and final reading as amended. Roll call for engrossment and ordainment. This is on an ordinance pertaining to retaining walls. Councilor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Janino.
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance is engrossed and ordained. Calendar item seven was also voted on favorably by the committee. This will be a roll call. Shall the city council grant the relief requested to Verizon Wireless to install a small cell antenna on top of a new utility pole at 243 North Shore Road? Councilor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Janino.
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted. Calendar item eight was also voted out favorably by the committee. Madam Clerk, may we call the roll? Shall the city council grant the relief requested to Network Building and Consulting to install a small cell antenna on a utility pole located near 12 South Furnace Street? Councilor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Janino.
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted. And then, calendar item number nine will be placed on file. On to communications. Calendar item number 10 is communication from the Director of Finance as it relates to the AMR contract extensions. We have our Director of Finance here.
Good evening. This is a request for the water meter project. We have remaining 268 meters that need, new meters that need to be installed. The reason we are redoing these contracts is because they came to an end date, they had been extended, and it's in the best interest of the city in order to deal with the SRF, the state revolving funds, to continue with a contractor and do it in that fashion. And we can follow up on it a little easier. There are, you see the contract that need to be extended. This should be the last extension because if it takes that long of a period of time to do, actually, we have 11,784 meters, water meters in the city, and we have installed some 11,516. And it's these last few that, because of the fact that can't gain entry into the homes, there's access issues. I mean, this project took a life of its own. We corrected a lot of the water and water meter problems as we went along in the past five or six years. So, there's about, other than if we take off the lead service ones, there's about 105 meters that the city has to take a look at and replace. So, that's why I'm asking, I'm asking on behalf of the water meter project to extend these contracts. It doesn't mean any more money, what it means is an extension for them to complete it.
Thank you. Any counselors have any questions?
Madam President.
Councilor Novoselsky.
Mr. Anzoni, what's going to happen with these 105 meters?
What's going to happen with them?
Yeah. Are these residential, commercial?
No, no, they're all residential. We're going to have them installed. They, some of the residents are going to be responsible because they have plumbing issues in where they put the meters, and they need to be moved, and we have to wait for them to move them. There are other issues where they aren't giving us access at all, so they can't give them the city access to get in there and change them, and that's probably one of the larger issues. But for the most part, the city has done the, we had to do curb stops because it was the curb stop shut off was not working, and then further, we have some body two curb stops that are remaining. But once they, residents receive, their curb stop is cleaned out and properly working, they have to contact the city and make another appointment, and we've made numerous attempts with a lot of them to get the, get access back into the home. So, the delay in the time period is pretty much the access getting back into the home. You know, I don't see any difficult meters that need to be replaced, but...
What are we going to do about the ones that aren't letting us in?
Well, we're eventually going to have to do something about them. We're trying to whittle those down so that we have an ordinance that was passed that allowed us to fine $200 a day for any type of not allowing the city access into the water, the water department, any access into the home. I mean, we don't, we don't want to use that, we'll use that as a last resort, but we're going to give them a little bit of time to let us in, and if they don't, and for some reason, we can't figure out why they won't, it's to their benefit that they get a new meter because it'll be accurately, more accurately reading the water. I mean, some of those older meters are reading water, they may be wrong altogether. We don't know until we get in there and change them, and that's what we need to do.
How many of these seniors, senior citizens?
We can't tell. We can't tell if they're senior citizens or not. Doesn't necessarily have to be. I think, I know, we know that they're residents, and we know that, again, we've made numerous contacts with them, we've actually gone and paced our stuck notices on the door telling them, call this number, please make an appointment, and it gets a little bit, well, it gets frustrating. Today I had my, this ought to was today, but it was the 50th public meeting on the water meters, so that's how many public meetings I've had on this water meter installation. It just goes on and on and on. We just want to close it down.
Judge, how many are absentee landlords?
Well, they're absentee landlords, again, we reached out and sent mail to them, registered mail, but, you know, the city just can't keep going and going and trying. We've actually sent a lot of people from the, a couple of the employees of the water department out and knocking on doors, try to get into the, into the place. But we're taking every avenue before we can actually find them, and that's what we're looking at.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Patch, and Counselor...
Thank you, Madam President. Judge, are these new contracts a part of a work change in an existing contract?
No, what these are, these are just the extension of the contract, the time period of the contract, and that's what it is. I'm looking for an extension of the time period of the contract. So, it's not asking for additional money, just a time period of the contract.
We're not going to be asked for additional money in July?
Not for this project, and hopefully by July, we're done.
Okay.
And that's what I'm looking at.
Thank you.
Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Judge, I just have a couple of questions because these are contract extensions on various facets of the implementation, right? So, like, for example, the water meter supply contract, I'm just curious, is that the company, B.J. Prescott, that's providing these meters to the city?
Yes, yeah, B.J. Prescott.
So, didn't we, why do we need to extend that contract? Are we just buying them piecemeal, or are we getting them? Didn't we sign a contract early on? Were we getting them for a set price and a certain amount?
Right.
So, why would we have to extend that contract if we've already bought the meters? Shouldn't that contract be completed and done with, or...
Well, the other part of that contract was the software, so they're helping us out with the software implementation, and in fact, they're looking to upgrade their software at the present time. So, we need them on board for this installation to make sure that, you know, we're up to date on our software, and making sure, don't forget, these are AMR meters, they're radio read through the waves and radio waves, and was looking at frequencies, and there are time problems occur that we need their expertise in order to rectify what the problems are. And, you know, some meters are installed, and we just can't read them, and what we try to do, we just can't read them, we need them to go out and actually go into the home and say, okay, this meter is not working or reading. The meter itself may be working, but the MTU isn't transmitting the appropriate frequency in order to, for the city to read it. So, that's part of it.
Okay, so, are these contract extensions, are they, are these contractors getting any additional fees for this? Are we paying extra to them, or was this an original bid that went out for the water meters and they have to comply with the bid, or is this a time extension only?
It's a time extension only.
So, there's no additional money that's being required?
Right.
So, you know, it's just basically letting us know that this work has not been done
Right.
in accordance with what the original schedule was, but it's not costing the rate payers anything, anything further?
It's just the schedule that was the problem.
Okay. Now, just one last question, Madam President, if I may. I'm just curious. I think it's all, it's a borderline rhetorical question, but I want to ask it. The meters, you know how the city is still providing meters to monitor, you know, water only as opposed to water sewer?
Right.
Right? So, like, those meters for people that want to fill their pools and things like that?
Right.
Is Prescott also providing those meters as well? Is it the same technology with those meters?
They are. It's an irrigation meter, which is attached, hard attached, but if you're talking about the PM, I guess the PSMM meters, which are the ones, the little black ones that you see, that you attach to your hose, no, they're not. That went out to another bid, and that came in on that.
Okay.
Those come in on that. But if it's hard plumbed, then it's something Prescott would handle.
Okay, but, so, these are just time extensions?
Yeah.
There's no ramifications in terms of any further cost to the rate payers then, right?
No.
Nothing. Okay. That's all I have, Madam President. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselors, Zambudo.
Thank you, Madam President, but my question was asked and answered that it was just an extension of time, and that's already been answered. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Counselor Keith.
Thank you, Madam President. Can you just clarify, how many are left? About 100? 100 and...
There's, to be exact, there is, right now, there are 268 meters that haven't been installed.
268?
Out of those, 130 of them are being handled by the, another contract altogether because the lead services, the city's going lead free as far as the water service to the residents and the businesses. On top of that, there are about 63 that are ready to install, but we can't gain access. And then, after that, and there's some 33 others that are either part on a vacant lot, has been demolished, a couple of oil farms, and actually, the city hall building. There's two meters that need to be put in here.
Can we get them to answer the door when they can install those meters? Now, I just wanted to know, so do you think this is something we should be completing in 2019?
It's a bigger project than we thought.
This is something that we probably sum up in 2019?
I really do hope so.
Off the books?
Yes.
Great.
We should be able to, just be able to put this in place.
Thank you.
Thank you. And it should be working 100%.
Thank you, counselors. Any other counselors? Madam Clerk, roll call. Shall the city council grant a six-month extension for the following contracts? CDM Smith, EJ Prescott, Inc., that's contract one, EJ Prescott, Inc. for contract two, Bay State Wind Supply Company, Brothers Electrical, and Spencer Contraction Company. Councilor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keith.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Janino.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, the contracts have been extended.
Thank you. Everybody have a happy holidays. Thank you.
Madam President.
Counselor.
Point of personal privilege.
State your point, Counselor.
I'd like to, I'd like to take a moment of silence. The city lost a young man who's really a legend in the city, and he was someone that was born with a small heart, but those of us who knew him, he had a really big heart. Mikey Carroll was Revere's only honorary firefighter ever named in the city of Revere, and I want to thank the fire department for the wonderful tribute that he got. He got a hero's send-off, and just really a wonderful young man, so I'd like to take a moment of silence. Thank you.
This time, we'll go on to motions. Calendar item 11 is a motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that the city of Revere look into the feasibility of placing a Marine Corps statue on the Legion Building. One, Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to put this in committee. There are some other things that I'd like to do after speaking with the Director of Veterans Affairs, Mr. Silvestri. We'd come up with an idea of hopefully honoring all branches of the service to include the Marine Corps of particular reason. That said, if we could place this in committee, I'd be grateful to do so.
Counselor.
Madam Shamen, thank you. Madam Shamen, I got a, I got a call from Leo McCaskill. Actually, he saw me down, down in my office at the Bagel Bin, and, and he asked me about this. I said, you know, I have no problem with it, and I told him, I told him to reach out to Mark Silvestri, Service VSO, and let them work it out and see what, and I know the council is pursuing it further, and that's, it's a good thing as far as I'm concerned. Whichever way we go, we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Rizzo.
I have no problem putting it into committee, particularly if there's other things that will be coinciding with this, but I do want to offer early support for this, and this, this particular Marine Corps statue came out of the home of former Marine and lifelong Revere resident, Joe Lazden, and apparently, he had a ton of military memorabilia that was in his house that he had either willed or gave away to various people around the community, and this happens to be one particular statue that he wanted to have, you know, prominently placed in memory of all Marines. So, now, if there's something for every branch of the service, of course, as a Navy veteran myself, that wouldn't bother me, but I know that Joe Lazden, you know, would, would want to see this happen, so I'm going to offer some early support for it right now. So, thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you. Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Madam President. I also will offer early support. I don't think there was anyone that I know of that was more supportive of the military branches and particularly the Marine Corps. You'd go by there on any given day, and you'd have American flags all along the fence and a statue of a Marine in the yard there, and he was just out there tremendously for the Marines and other veterans of this community. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And our resident Marine, Counselor Patch.
Thank you, Madam President. As you all know, I am a Marine Corps veteran, served the year in Vietnam. I told, of course, I support this with all my heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? This will go to Veterans Affairs. Calendar item number 12, motion presented by Counselor McKenna, in light of the recent fatal car accident on Winthrop Avenue, that the mayor be requested to again contact National Grid to repair the streetlights on Winthrop Parkway, Winthrop Avenue, and Revere Beach Parkway. These repairs have been requested on several occasions, and apparently, the repairs are too costly and complicated for National Grid to repair. As an example, the lights on Revere Beach Parkway have been out since July of 2014 due to the tornado. The lack of response from National Grid is completely unacceptable and could potentially lead to more fatal accidents in the future on these heavily traversed roadways. Counselor Vice President McKenna.
Thank you, Madam President. So, I walked around from the Rita Singer Bridge onto Winthrop Ave in front of the new development site, then passed the North Shore Gas Station, onto the Revere Police Station in a one-mile radius. If you look, you can see the pictures. I took pictures. Seventeen overhead lights, streetlights, are out on major crosswalks. As you can see through the pictures, there are major crosswalks and major lights are out on these crosswalks. Pedestrians are unsafe. There's two out at Thomasello Drive, that is a big intersection, it's right on the crosswalks, that's out too. We, as a city council, have addressed this issue time and time again without any kind of response in fixing this problem. We need to keep our pedestrians safe. LED lighting should have been installed already so our residents can cross the street and intersection and not be afraid to walk across a bridge to get to their house because of no lighting. It's, it is time as a city to call out National Grid and say, shame on you. Do your job and address these issues before we have another tragedy. Thank you.
Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you, Madam President. Second part of this, and I'll put it up as a separate motion, Counselor McKenna. What if the lighting currently contributed to this event? Aren't they afraid of getting sued? I mean, this, you look at it, the lighting that's out is the lighting that is exactly where this death took place, and God forbid, they have some responsibility in it. So, with that said, I support this motion fully, and I would like to put up a secondary motion after this one is passed, Madam President, if you give me that latitude.
Thank you. Counselor Novoselsky?
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I thank Counselor McKenna for, again, bringing this forward. I've brought it forward since 2012, even before Counselor McKenna was a city counselor, working with National Grid, and all they gave me is a lot of, couple letters, and very frustrated, I know her frustration is everybody's frustration. And unfortunately, we had this incident, which I don't believe it came from the lighting issue, but it happened. It just happened from a jerk that was doing drugs and drinking and falling asleep at the wheel. And I would say that it's too bad, it's unfortunate it happened, but I think lighting will help it, and I know some of the wooden poles along the Revere Beach Parkway have been changed to LED. I don't know if there's a different wattage of LED that they can put up to make it brighter in those locations, but I know all the, all these locations should be lit, it should be safer, and if it me, I know a letter went to the governor already from the mayor asking for his help to DCR and MassDOT, and it's a duplicate street because they both service the roadway, but very frustrating to say the least, and I can't wait to talk about the next, the next motion that Counselor McKenna has in because, you know, part of this is in my ward, and I, you know, I feel for it. These people lived around the corner from me, and I know Leah Singer, who was a crossing guy down at the Garfield, down at the Waverly Ave and Centennial, met this young lady every single morning, and she came up and she hugged her. She said, I love you, thank you for protecting us. And then she goes to another area, and so, that's all I have to say. Thank you, Madam President.
Any other counselors? On Counselor McKenna's motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered. Counselor Rotundo, would you like to offer your subs? Counselor Rotundo? Oral motion?
Thank you, yes. Motion presented by Counselor Rotundo, or city council, whatever is easiest, that all crosswalks and sidewalks are butting Route 145... all crosswalks and sidewalks are butting Route 145 entering Thomasello Way have the guardrails placed there. I think if guardrails were placed within that area and along, it would probably at least slow down the vehicle from killing this person. And there are certain parts of the greenway where it does not have a guardrail, so wherever there are one that is not existing, that we do that. Counselor McKenna, please.
Counselor McKenna.
I think it was about six months ago, I offered a motion to put skip lines in that intersection and new crosswalks. I think the new crosswalks were done, but skip lines weren't. Now, those skip lines can keep the traffic when they're coming in from... They're coming out of Thomasello Drive, and they're turning over across the way onto Winthrop Ave., where the gas station is. There's no direction. So, these people are going every which way. If they had skip lines, at least it would keep them in the direction that they're supposed to be going. It would keep them in the lane. So, that's a... I think that's Mass DOT. I'm not really sure, Tony. Is that Mass DOT? You can say yes or no. You don't have to...
It's DCR property.
Oh, it is.
I think it's maintained by DOT.
So, maybe we should also put that in the motion, too, the skip lines direct the traffic from the intersection from Thomasello onto Winthrop Ave.
Madam President, I have no problem with that. I think even Counselor Novosowski might have something to say. I'm not sure.
Counselor.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I know the mayor, as I said, sent a letter to the governor asking for something like this to be installed. They were talking about bollards. I don't think bollards are big enough, you know. I would like to see Jersey barriers there, you know, at each crossover at the Sunoco Station and at Thomasello, and even think about putting it at the new one down by Dominos. So, I think Jersey barriers are more hazardous to the drivers if they're going to go out of control and protect our people, too. Thank you.
If we could also send a side letter to the DOT, as well as Bob DeLeo, and the governor asking that the state traffic engineer evaluate the site and make recommendations for mediation at that site in this sense... Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Just note, Counselor Zambudo is recused from this conversation and motion. Any counselors on the motion as amended? All in favor? All opposed? So ordered. And if I may, just take a brief point of personal privilege. I was going to save this for the end of the meeting, but I see it fitting after this motion. Last week, the city had a very solemn vigil at City Hall in memory of the two victims of this accident, Adriana and Natasha Nicole, so I'd just like to take a moment of silence for them and for their families. And our thoughts and deepest sympathies are with the Mejia Rivera family at this time.
Councilor item number 13, motion presented by Counselor McKenna that the mayor request a representative from National Grid to appear before the city council at the next regular meeting to explain the lack of electrical work being completed in Revere. On November 19th, a dispatcher from MassDOT assessed the lighting problems on the Rita Singer Bridge and determined the problem. An overhead wire feeding the load center attached to the bridge was draped over a chain link fence. In order to restore the lighting, National Grid would have to remove this live wire. MassDOT contacted National Grid to remove the live wire, but there has been no response. Please see attached letter from MassDOT. Counselor Zambudo is recused from discussion on this matter.
Counselor Vice President McKenna.
Thank you, Madam President. So, I received a letter from the mayor, which he received it from Mass DOT, saying that they assessed the damage where the lights weren't working, and they found that there was a wire that was... a main wire that was feeding off of the main power. It was draped over a chain link fence. It had fallen, and it was draped over a chain link fence. So, for them to fix the lighting, they have to remove this live wire that's on the fence. This is disgusting. If it is a live wire, which I, you know, I don't know what the letter says, but I don't know if they say it's a live wire, but it's a leading wire. If it's on a chain link fence, then if children are playing there and they touch it, can they get electrocuted? Is that a tragedy waiting to happen? It's unsafe for pedestrians to walk there, so I don't want to just see a representative from National Grid. I want to see someone that's, you know, that has some clout and come before us so we can... I mean, we have a representative come, and he shakes his head, and he says, "Yes, yes, 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 yes," and I don't want to name any names, but, you know, let's have someone that's a little bit more, that we can ask questions to, and they can do something about it. And I just would like to say to the city, if you have the time, I would love you to call National Grid or write letters and say that you're very... you're not satisfied with the work. They're not doing any work, so you're not satisfied with what they're not doing for the city. Thank you.
Counselor Novosowski.
Thank you, Madam President. Once again, we've been through... down this road before, and I said, and I don't mind mentioning Dan Cameron's name. He's their government liaison. He's a nice guy. He does what he can. Unfortunately, you know, he's a spokesperson. He's a middleman, and all he has to do is, he tries to go to the operations department, but it's the operations people that are making these decisions. Dan is doing the best he can to appease us and bringing it to them, and if they don't do anything, unfortunately, it's not his fault. But I agree with Counselor McKenna. I told her this. I said, "A representative is not the right way to go. We have to go to their Vice President of Operations." And if they want to bring Dan with them, you know, let him hear what they have to say, but it does have to be a higher category and, you know, a higher ranking person to come down here. This is terrible. The Rita Singer Bridge, you know, they told me a different story. They told me it was an underground line going down towards Dominos, along the sidewalk that was rotted and not connected, and that hit five different lights over the bridge, a brand-new bridge. It hasn't been going since the bridge was built, even before that, and it is a disgrace and National Grid, once again, should be ashamed of themselves. So, with that, I would like to make sure we mention the Vice President of Operations of the district, regional manager, whoever it may be, to come down and talk to us. Come in front of us and take the heat. Disgusting. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors?
If I may speak very briefly on this, my colleagues, I'm disgusted with National Grid at this point. The service that we've received for our electrical in the city has been awful, and I don't even want to get into it, but what they're doing to their gas workers and how that's affecting our city, not only the residents that are employed by them, but people that need services that are losing out because of how awful they're treating their employees, I'm just disgusted. You know, it's bad enough that the electrical work's not being done. It's bad enough that there are people that they've had out of work since June. It's bad enough that the gas work's not getting done, and the work that is being done is breaking a strike, essentially. You know, they're digging up our roadways. They're leaving trenches. I've talked to Counselor Patch about numerous times. Ward 6 is... it's awful how bad they've left trenches. I'm really, really sick of it, and I have a lot to say if someone gets here, not only about this issue, but a lot of problems that National Grid's causing in our city, and it's not fair. They have the money, they have the resources, they have the time. There's absolutely no excuse on why we're being treated this way, because I guarantee you that there are other cities that they're not disrespecting like this. Counselor Novosowski.
Madam President, just one thing if we can add. Can we include our state delegation on this letter so they know what's going on? Maybe they can give us a hand?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great motion, Counselor. On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 14, motion presented by Counselor McKenna that the mayor request the building department and fire department to develop a courtesy public notification plan for residents and counselors relative to the issuance of demolition permits.
Counselor Vice President McKenna.
Thank you, Madam President. This week, I'm not going to name any names, but we had a demolition done, and I know for a fact that I don't... well, I guess I don't know for a fact, but I know that a lot of counselors weren't contacted. I wasn't contacted, so in turn, I couldn't contact my residents to tell them that there was going to be a demolition going on. There was a lot of dust, a lot of debris, a lot of glass. These people could have had a heads up, and they could have moved their cars, they could have, you know, secured their property, but nothing was done, nothing was said. So, I'm just asking for a courtesy call to say, "Joanne McKenna, in your ward, you're going to have a demolition going on on such and such a day. Can you contact your residents?" That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and I want to thank Counselor McKenna for putting this motion in. It's a great motion. It's common sense. If there's going to be demolition in your neighborhood, seems reasonable that the abutters are going to get notified, that they're going to be knocking buildings down. It just... it's beyond my imagination why abutters weren't at least notified, but the council should be notified also. So, if we get phone calls, we know what to tell them. So, you know, one guy wound up having his car towed. I mean, these are direct abutters to where this building was being knocked down. It really... it makes no sense to me. So, hopefully, this motion shouldn't even have to be a motion, but I totally agree with it, and I'll be voting for it. Thank you, Madam President.
Counselor Rotundo.
I'm going to be offering a side motion. I want the developer, as well as Benny DeChristopher, to come before the council. I'd like to find out who was responsible for maintaining the monitoring of air quality during the demolition of the building before and after. I'd like to see the actual documentation for this actual air quality testing, if it took place. I want to know who was the management of the site at the time that it took place for the developer, as well as for the fire department. I understand that there's debris scattered around the properties surrounding this particular property. I am deeply disturbed that this took place. More importantly, what troubles me the most is no one can tell me that the residents were not put in danger because of the exposure from this particular development. When you have particles, you know, dissipate it in the air, you have both human and animal life that are affected by it. More importantly, we don't know what type of environmental issues may have been caused thereafter, if at all. So, I'd like someone to come before me and tell me, you know, what took place. More importantly, my understanding from the sequence of events is that the application to demolish took place, and then the day after, the demolition was allowed without any type of notification to the abutters. More importantly, doing so would have allowed the abutters to close their windows, would have allowed them to move their vehicles, would have allowed them to do a whole bunch of things. And the thing that I want to know is what type of screening mechanism were placed up around the demolition? My uncle does this in New York, and so whenever they basically implode a building, they put up around it, and you can always go back to YouTube and take a look at it, they put up a 10-foot fence, and then they put up a screening around it, usually a blue top or something of significant material, and also a fabric buffer, because you've got a shockwave that goes with it. So, I'd like to know what they did to prepare it and what standards did they follow? Did they follow the state protocol? Thank you.
Thank you. I have Counselor Keefe, followed by Counselor Zambudo, followed by Counselor Patch.
Thank you, Madam President. I agree with Counselor McKenna, and I think that any time we have any types of major disruption in the neighborhood, there should be some form of communication sent out, especially to the direct abutters. But also, if we can add that this would go along with any types of street opening or power work or, you know, of course, without any gas work right now, but this comes up often when the city or when outside contractors are doing any types of major construction. A lot of times, residents aren't notified, the council isn't notified. So, if we can just make it a point that, you know, a week or two weeks out, to give the best heads up, whether we're using some sort of... I'm not suggesting we always use the reverse 911 system, because it could be a small section of the city, but using the 311 system, using the online or social medias and advertising it in the paper. But I know there's a small cost, but, you know, the people living close by are directly affected, so I think it's a small cost to pay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I received calls, a lot of calls also, and I did quite a bit of follow-up with the building inspector and the building department to find out, you know, number one, if the residents were confused as to whether or not they had a right to tear the building down, and there was some ambiguity in the special permit. I think there's a lot of things that we could do here that maybe would require us to change the ordinances. If they followed the state building code, that doesn't necessarily mean they had to notify the abutters. So, maybe we can put these kind of things in our special permits when we do special permits here. So, you know, there's some situations here that slip by, and I don't think anybody was trying to pull anything over on anybody. According to the building department, they were completely within their rights and all that, and we went back and forth a lot on this, but we can put some protections in for our residents, and I think the place to do it is in special permits. We put restrictions on special permits so we can... Or maybe we do that, and we do a little ordinance change as to demolitions in neighborhoods and so forth and so on. But I would like to think that the building department at least knew that they were doing things properly over there when they did, in fact, tear the building down. So, I think we can make some changes up here to make it better. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Patch.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't know if... I know it used to be that when they demolished a house or a business, they'd have to have a fireman on detail and a police on detail. I don't know if that happened here. I was really unaware they tore the building down.
I know they had a firefighter... fire apparatus there. They couldn't get... they had problems with the hydrant. They couldn't get water out of it. I don't know what happened after that. So, I heard they... because it was cold, they didn't want to put the water on because it might freeze. I heard a number of stories, but I know that they had a problem with the fire hydrant, and I know that the residents... well, I just heard it tonight, that the residents have been complaining about this fire hydrant not working for five years. So, I guess it proved its fact.
Well, first of all, I want to... that's a great motion, Counselor McKenna. But I believe they're supposed to have a firefighter on detail there.
To keep the dust...
Especially if there's gas involved or whatever, the fire starts.
They did have a fire apparatus there, but like I said, they couldn't... I don't think they could get the water. I have a resident here, he's going to speak about it, so he knows more than I do.
Great. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Counselor Morabino.
You know, I think we all said our piece. I think we... at the end of the day, Counselor McKenna just wants us to be... wants... thinks the council should be notified. I don't think that's too far of a stretch for us to be notified. I don't think anyone's doing anything malicious, as Counselor Zambudo said. I think, you know, if you're going to demolish a building, we obviously all knew that that building was going to eventually be demolished and replaced with a new building, but eventually, you know, we should... as a city council, we should have answers or we should have the... we should know when something is going to be demolished so we can notify our residents and let it can go out beforehand.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there any residents that'd like to speak? Just state your name and address for the record.
Nico Christopoulos, 111 Mill Street. Merry Christmas, counselors. I can't say enough about the motion from Counselor McKenna. This is something I'm shocked that we don't already have in place at the city. We woke up Thursday morning, it sounded like a plane crashed in the neighborhood, and we found out they pulled down a 4,000-square-foot building that's 80 years old and told nobody. The cloud of smoke, the dust, the cinder blocks that fell into Taft Street, the glass that's on the neighbors' properties, all our cars covered in dust. Not one letter. When Mr. Ryanello wanted to get his... When Mr. Ryanello wanted to get his special permit, he sent letters to us, he knocked on our doors. We had many meetings with Counselor McKenna, she was wonderful, helping us out through the whole thing. All of a sudden, he goes for this permit to get the building knocked down at some time on Wednesday, less than 24 hours, they're pulling that building down? I mean, that's crazy. So I'm glad that the council's supporting this motion, and I just wanted to come up here, and I heard this motion was going to come up tonight, I had to come up and let you guys know the situation. And when I called the administration at City Hall, I can't say that they were as helpful as the council's been. You know, we got a lot of static from City Hall, and I don't know why. We're the residents, we live there, he doesn't even live in Revere. You drive down my neighborhood, you see who takes care of their properties down there. It's a well-kept property, it's a well-kept neighborhood. And for him to do something like that and not let us know, that wasn't the original plan, Counselor Maribito. He was supposed to be adding a floor onto that existing building, and he was going to put storage. And then all of a sudden, we find out, he pulls a permit, and less than 24 hours later, the building gets pulled down. I don't know if we need engineers to look at that, or if the Building Department's qualified to say that that's a safe knockdown, but obviously, they didn't do it the right way, because when they pulled that down, we had debris out in the street. The street wasn't blocked off, there was no police detail, there was a firefighter there, but they couldn't tap the hydrant we'd been complaining about for the last five years, because it's broken. And we all remember, we had that huge fight down Taft Street. So I think that's a big concern to us. So I don't know what happened, they never tapped another hydrant until, you know, the city received numerous calls, I'm sure you guys all received numerous calls. It shouldn't have happened, and I hope it will never happen again. And I would like to see those reports, I would like to see, and I'm not sure how to obtain it, he said he has an air quality test, where is it? You can't tell me in an 80-year-old building that you knock it down and you have no hose on it that that's safe. Those particulates in the air, just from the concrete alone, is hazardous, let alone if there was asbestos and lead paint in there. And again, it's an 80-year-old building. So I'm not sure how he got away with this, but now the neighborhood's skeptical about what he's going to put there. What is his plan? Because this was not the plan. We were up here for several meetings, and never once did we talk about demolition of that building, not once. And all of a sudden, this happened. So I would like to know how we got away with that, because when I have worked on my house and I pull a permit, those inspectors make sure I dot my i's and cross my t's, and we have to jump through hoops to get that permit signed off. For this gentleman to be able to do that, I don't know, maybe there's a conflict somewhere, but I'm not sure.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask some more questions, please. Do you know if they, they didn't, they didn't tell anybody to bait, they were going to bait the property before the demolition, or?
Well, thank you for bringing that up. That's another thing. We're supposed to bait for rats. We know the rat problem we have in the city. I've been pouring concrete and blocking off every passageway for rats, and they just knocked down this building without baiting it. When I called the Building Department and asked them, did they bait? She told me yes. How? He just got the permit Wednesday night, so who went out and baited? Also, we called 311, and I think I spoke to a gentleman, Alan Fitzmaurice, who told me the letters went out. That was a blatant lie, because if you get approved Wednesday and you knock that building down at 8:00 Thursday morning, what letters did you send out? And even if you did send letters, how are we going to get them in 12 hours? So that was a blatant lie from the administration.
Madam President, just to point to personal privilege, how does a 311 operator know if letters were disseminated?
Good question.
I mean, no, that's, so, I think you were asking the wrong person, Nico. I believe, Madam Clerk, who sends out letters for that, do you know?
I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll have to get some more information, and I think that we'll vote on Counselor McKenna's motion, and I know Counselor Rotundo has an oral motion that we'll put in, which hopefully, we can get some more answers. So, does anyone else have anything?
No, but I really appreciate all your help, and I hope we can figure this out.
Yeah, we are all very sorry.
Thank you, Counselors. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Thank you.
Anybody else? On Counselor McKenna's motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered. Madam Clerk, can you go over Counselor Rotundo's oral motion, just so we can get any clarification that we might need?
So what I have in summary, please correct me if I'm wrong, motion by Counselor Rotundo that the building inspector appear before the city council to explain what happened. I would assume you are referring to 727 Revere Beach Parkway, to have the building inspector and the developer.
As well as?
Appear before the city council to explain what happened at 727 Revere Beach Parkway, to include monitoring of the air quality test, city site management, screaming, screening mechanisms at the site, and standards.
And receipts for, for baiting.
And? Any other counselors? Any other counselors on Counselor Rotundo's oral motion? On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered. And I also have an oral motion, if I may, my colleagues. I want to put in an oral motion to have that hydrant in the vicinity of this property. What was the correct address, Madam Clerk? Was it 77?
It's on Taft Street, I believe.
So.
I haven't asked the question. I was just wondering.
Nico, what was the address of the hydrant on Taft Street?
It's at the corner of Mill and Parkway.
So I'd like to put in an oral motion for the hydrant at the corner of Mill Street and the Parkway.
It's the Fire Department or DPW?
For the DPW and the Fire Department, to evaluate what's causing the issue and repair it appropriately, because if it's been going on for five years, I think we're past the 311 report. Any counselors on my oral motion? On the motion, all in favor? All opposed? So ordered. There are a couple of late communications, Madam Clerk?
Sure, late communication, this is referencing former Council Order Number 18-370, communication from the city solicitor providing an update on the litigation between the owners of the Wonderland property and the city of Revere relative to the parking lot use.
Counsel Powers.
Thank you, Madam President. I think the, the communication speaks very clearly with regard to the, what is going on down there at Wonderland. And rather than go through the entire verbiage here, I'm just going to summarize it. The, they issued a permit to park cars there in 2013. In 2015, the permit expired. I requested the building inspector to issue a cease and desist because they kept parking cars there, which he did. Shortly after that, the LLC in New York, which owns that property, appealed the building inspector's decision to the Zoning Board of Appeals. The Zoning Board of Appeals held up the decision of the building inspector, and this indicated that that special permit, and it's clearly on line seven of the special permit, expired July of 2015. The LLC in New York appealed that decision to Suffolk Superior Court, and that's where that is now. And there is litigation pending. The city of Revere, and this letter is from Paul Capizzi, the city solicitor, the city of Revere right now is contesting their appeal to the Suffolk Superior Court. My feeling is that the city of Revere has lost great amounts of revenue since 2015 by allowing those cars to park down there. And any future dealings with Wonderland, I'm confident, I'm very confident, that based on line seven and based on the building inspector's decision and the ZBA's decision, I feel very strongly that the Suffolk Superior Court judge's handling this will rule in favor of the city of Revere. If and when that happens, I think that before any other permits for anything down there are granted, there should be mitigation to the city of Revere for the monies lost and the monies they've gained by allowing that parking down there. So I just throw this out there because I want the people in the city to realize that there's nothing right now that we can do about that until the Suffolk Superior Court renders a decision with regard to the parking down there. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. Any other counselors? This will be placed on file. Is one more late?
Late communication in reference to Council Order 18-401, communication from the building inspector providing the council with a legal status update on the following properties, 29 Therae Avenue and 585 North Shore Road.
Counsel Powers.
Thank you, Madam President. 29 Therae Avenue is, for lack of a better word, become a dump. There's a dumpster down there that's been sitting there for a couple of months, nobody seems interested in empty, having it emptied. There's all piles of debris, there's floats and things floating in the water down on Mills Avenue. And right now, my understanding is, there, there are hundreds of thousands of dollars in fines that have been levied against that, that organization, whoever owns that property down there. And also, 585 North Shore Road, which is the old refrigeration plant down there. So I understand that, you know, this is, is legal ongoings here, and I would ask that Representative from the Emrosio Brown appear before the city council at their next regular scheduled meeting, AKA, I guess Peter Brown who's handling this, and advise the city, if it has to be an executive session, that's fine, but I think this city council has a right to know what's going on down there with that prop, with both of those properties. Thank you, Madam President.
Counsel Armando.
If Counselor Powers has no problem with me amending it, also find out what's going on with Sozio's. It's like a truck stop there. I mean, it's been a significant period of time thereafter the fire, what are they doing? You know, I know it's a private property, but it seems like it's just a basic truck depot.
So this motion was already in last week, and this is a late communication in response to the motion, so you might have to put an oral motion in for Sozio's, because I don't think you can amend a motion that was already voted on?
Yeah, we'll do that.
So.
Actually, you know what, I'll do, deal with it the next time, because I just feel bad, I keep on throwing more oral motions.
All right. So on the late communication that will be placed on file, thank you, Counselor. And there's no further business. If I may, just take a point of personal privilege to my colleagues, this is the last meeting of the 2018 calendar year.
Point of personal privilege.
I'm still, I'm.
Point of personal privilege.
Can I? Ah. You guys. Thank you. Oh, God. No, I'm going to cry.
We made history.
Oh, wait, I'm going to, at the risk of not crying, I just wanted to state a point to thank my colleague, Counselor McKenna, for being an amazing vice president this year.
Thank you.
It's been an honor working with her. It was a pleasure being her student, and it was even more of a pleasure working with her in this capacity. We've worked on some great motions together. I want to thank my colleagues for having the faith in both of us to elect us as your president and vice president. It's been an honor. This is my second time serving as president, and anyone that knows me knows I love it. I have a really hard time sitting over there and being quiet, so this is fun for me.
We made history.
We made history together. Thank you so much for the flowers, you guys are awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel McKenna, do you have anything you want to?
Madam President, Madam President.
We have our Christmas party tonight, so we're going to motion to adjourn.
I would just like to make one statement.
Wait, I have another point. Counsel Powers. Sorry.
The 1992 Democratic National Convention, which I attended, there was signage down there, okay? And the signage read, "When women get involved, things happen."
Yes.
Thank you.
Definitely. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Powers.
Dilly-dilly.
So from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank my colleague, Council Vice President Joanne McKenna, I want to thank all of my colleagues. This is the last meeting of the calendar year, so I just want to take a moment to wish everyone celebrating a very Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and I wish you all a very happy and healthy new year. The city council will be adjourned until January 7th. My colleague, Counselor Rizzo, has a comment.
Madam President, thanks so much, and I know it's the, it's the 11th hour here, but, you know, you know, we like to talk about good things when they happen, and so all of our service organizations around the city have done a tremendous job this holiday raising money and supporting various causes, families in need. And I just want to give a big shout-out to Donna Mahoney and the VFW Matola Post for a great job on very short notice, raising, you know, toys to fulfill dozens of kids' Christmas this year, and the Marines that were down there to participate. It was really wonderful to be part of, and I just want to congratulate them for a great effort, so I just wanted to mention that. Thank you very much.
That's a great point, Counselor. So thank you again, everyone. Merry Christmas, happy holidays, happy new year. The city council will be adjourned until January 7th, 2019. Thank you all, and good night.